All right. Good evening. The time being 7:00 p.m. on June 13th. Coram of the Planning Board being present, call this meeting to order. First item on our agenda is Agenda Item A, which is approval of minutes for May 9th, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the May 9th minute.
All right, have a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Moving on to Agenda Item B, Committee Reports, Administrative Actions. Do any of the members have any committee reports they wish to make at this time?
The only thing I'd like to mention, Mr. Chairman, if I could, is that I attended my first MIMCOG meeting, that's the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments, for anybody that's interested. And they've appointed a new executive director, a named Jenny Ray, who was a former Planning and Community Development Director from Arlington. So, and they're meeting a lot more in person. It's been virtual for, obviously, as things have been for a while, so I'm looking forward to continuing working with them.
All right. That means that she replaces...
Beverly Woods.
I'm sorry?
Beverly Woods is a former executive director of MIMCOG. There was a brief stint with someone else for three days, but they decided it wasn't for them.
Well, good.
Yeah.
Excellent. All right. So you're pretty happy about that, so you're fine? I reserve any further comment on the news that we received this evening.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Excellent. All right, so that takes care of committee reports. B2 is Town Planner's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to move through this quickly. So I have items from last meeting's report, which we unfortunately did not hold due to lack of public hearings, really, and no one wanted to come and just listen to me talk. So first item is sidewalk updates. So you'll remember in the past couple of months, I have been updating you folks on the progress of getting some more sidewalk funding for Route 38. And I was let know by Senator Feingold's office that they submitted an amendment to the Mass Senate Budget to earmark $50,000 for the design of the portion of sidewalk in front of Balance Spa, in front of 1866 Main Street, including the signal updates to Main and Livingston. So that was very nice, and hopefully that goes through and that lives through any other iterations of the budget. The next item is the as-built updates. So you'll also recall, a couple of weeks ago, we had discussions about all the outstanding as-bills through the efforts of some of the consulting engineers. I've been able to resolve, excuse me, resolve a couple of those. And then I conducted an audit of other outstanding bonds on the list and compared it against the Tax Collector Treasurer's official ledger, and I was able to scrub a few more. And then, you know, there's a couple of items in the attachment. You'll note that these are ongoing projects, and, you know, those aren't going to be up for discussion anytime soon. And then there's another few here where I noted some of the outstanding issues that we're waiting on for the bond. I won't get too far into any of them, but just some of them we know are waiting on final paving work in front of Toyota. We're waiting for some growing seasons to fill out 1201 Main Street for their certificate of compliance and their as-built submittal. So a lot of this stuff is going to be in progress, and I won't bore you with the rest of them. You're free to read those, and if you have any specific questions, you can ask. Few other miscellaneous items. Shameless plug for the summer farmers market, which is starting this Thursday at Livingston Street from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., and it'll run through September 29th. The Fall Festival, again, shameless plug, sorry, everyone. Fall Festival will take place Saturday, October 1st, and Sunday, October 2nd of this year. And it's the first time we're going to have activities on both days, so we're really excited about that. Two other items on the Senate Budget. We're looking to codify additional financial support for Tewksbury Police and Fire for their response to activity at the state hospital. I understand that that hasn't been made permanent yet, but that is an ongoing effort that Senator Feingold's office has kept me updated on. That takes care of the last report. Next one for this time, just a couple of updates on not necessarily projects that have come to the Planning Board, just kind of goings-on around town that I'm sure you've seen activity at. 1060 Main Street, the former skewers, the new owners have taken, have gotten building permits, and their construction is underway. They plan to open a Mediterranean-style restaurant called Para Grill, and they actually own and operate a restaurant called Paprika Grill in Salem, Mass. Lot looks like a really delicious menu, so looking forward to having them open up. 836 Main Street, the former Maribelas, excuse me. The new owners have taken, have received permits for exploratory demolition work to see what parts of the kitchen and the interior can be preserved for future construction. They intend to do a complete interior renovation with some exterior improvements, including an addition with, for an office, an additional freezer space. They intend to open a test kitchen of Italian-style food, which I'm sure we're not short on in Tewksbury, but it's always fun to see a little bit more, called Berundi. They have an existing restaurant in Waltham, ranging from arancini to pasta to specialty oils and things like that. And next item, 1866 Main Street, formerly Santander Bank. Now, you folks will remember them. They came to us last year to get a used special permit to own and operate a bakery. Little couple of bumps in the road, and they've changed from Cucciello's to La Vita Dolce, but I'm happy to report that even beyond this report, they had building permits issued on June 8th, so they're going to start getting in there. They had their final kitchen plans approved, so hopefully we see some more activity there, and hopefully they're open, excuse me, by the end of the year. 1800 Main Street, the former Eastern Bank. Again, you'll remember, they came to us for a special permit to operate a Starbucks. They also have their building permits, they were issued on June 6th, to do the interior renovation. They may be coming back to us to do signed special permits because they submitted a signed package to the Building Commissioner, and we realized that they didn't put any on their plan, and didn't have a master sign plan at the time because it wasn't required. So I believe they're going to go and they're going to do some of the signs by right that they're allowed to, and then they're going to come back with a signed package to come to the Planning Board. I'm thinking the July 18th meeting to be able to get those on the books, and hopefully, again, we see Starbucks by the end of the year. And that's it.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Louder.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item B3, 1325 Main Street Bond Release. Is there any, any, is there any issues?
Going to be after discretion.
Could you state your names to the record? The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. My name's Scott Erickson from Perkins &amp; Ansell. I have with me here Brad Cerulla from Cerulla Development, LLC. Board may recall, it's been a few years since we last appeared before you. In 2017, this board issued a special permit to develop 14 townhouses in a single building consisting of five retail spaces with seven apartment-style units above. Since that time, we have modified and extended that permit. Unfortunately, over the past few years, our client has looked at this and just can't make it work. We met with Mr. Sadwick and Ms. Louder in May of this year to discuss our client's plan to abandon the special permit and relinquish all rights under it. Obviously, as you all know, things have changed both globally and locally with the town's adoption of the recent overlay. So our client is going to be working with Omni Properties to look at potential alternatives for this site, and we hope to be before this board soon with a new plan for the development of the site. In the meantime, unfortunately, though, the current special permit is simply not viable. So we have requested that the bond associated with that permit be released, and we will certainly update the board as we move forward. The site presently is secure. I drove by there today myself. There's a fence up. I know that there were concerns about degrade at the site. The site has been leveled. Any existing holes that were, or foundation diggings, trenchings that were at the site have been leveled off and filled. There are some stumps that remain at the site. About half of the stumps that were to be removed have been removed. There's still an excavator on the site for that purpose, and so that work continues. We expect that it will be done very soon.
All right. We'll start with Mr. Fattaya.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I was at the site today myself.
Yes.
You know, so a lot of stumps there, a lot of stones there, some big depressions on the left-hand side as you went in.
Depressions?
Yeah, big kind of depression there on the left-hand side, and I was there today.
Okay, we'll certainly look at that. I didn't see that. I just rolled by, so.
So let me ask you, what are your plans, if you're going to abandon the permit, right, and the site and so forth, what are your plans with the fencing and the debris on-site that's there now?
The thought was that we would keep the fencing to maintain a safe and secure site. Any debris would be removed, especially, as you indicated, the stumps and any stones. You know, we want to keep a safe site, but until we figure out what we're going to do, there'll be no additional work at this time.
Okay. So my concern is this. I drive by the location on a regular basis. I used to attend, go into the store as well when you guys were open, but it's an eyesore. You know, I drive by there regularly. All the, all the screening that's there is flapping in the wind like, and it's like a dump site. So I go by again, and I see, whether you know it or not, a for-sale sign on a car out front. I'm like, this is Main Street, Tewksbury. You know, this is, we can't, we can't tolerate this. Other sites that are in town were after all the time about upkeeping it and keeping it clean and keeping it looking presentable, you know? And I understand, like many of the residents probably, that work was being done there. But having found out through my notes here and the report from Ms. Louder that you're going to abandon the permit, there is no way that I'm going to allow the release of the bond until you fully comply with getting that site cleaned, maintained, and presentable for the rest of the town that drives by and looks at it. We represent the residents of town, and I've got a number of people calling me and saying, what's up at 1325 Main Street? Are they progressing? Are they not? So we're in limbo as much as, as much as you guys have been, you know, so, but, so I would need that you guys do some more work there.
I appreciate those comments, Mr. Fattaya. I assure you, the Cerullos more than anyone else want to see that site developed. Obviously, this has been, you know, this has been no boon to them.
I understand.
You know, and so we are working to that end, but your concerns are well-founded. We'll certainly address any of those issues. What I would ask of this board is perhaps some clear direction for what the expectations are associated with the release of the bond. The bond was obviously to secure the performance under the permit. The permit's not moving forward, but it's important for the town, for the Cerullos, for the neighborhood, that the site be clean and, and, you know, presentable, at least until the new plan is brought forth. And obviously, like I said, that's in development. We don't have a new plan at this stage, otherwise we'd be before you on that.
So that's why I asked you about whether the fence is going to come down. You mentioned the fence is going to stay up?
I think a fence should stay up, but I defer to this board. I mean, I think it would be important to secure the site. If the board feels differently about the fence, then I'm certainly happy to speak with my client about that.
I wouldn't have a problem with the fence coming down, providing it's a safe site and that people, people could walk in there now if they wanted to. I walked right in, the fence was not secured, per se. There was not a lock on it. I walked, opened the gate and walked in again. Not my first visit to the site. I was there before and, you know, and relayed some messages to Ms. Louder about what I seen there, you know? And I was with Mr. Duffy, as a matter of fact. We both reviewed the site, and that's when we, I know you've done some filling in there, but I still need to have some more done there and make the site presentable and cleared and so forth and so on. And then the fence could come down, and the flapping screening could go away as well, so.
Understood.
Until you decide what you're going to do and then move forward, so.
Understood. And again, so to the extent that this board has, you know, consensus on what the expectations would be, you know, obviously, we want to make sure that the site's graded, leveled, so we'll look at that depression.
That's my own, my opinion only. You have four other members here that need to.
Right.
Before he stays as well, so.
Right.
With that, I'm all set. Thank you.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, and I, you know, pretty much agree with Mr. Fattaya's assessment of the site. We both, we both walked it. And if I remember correctly, though, I don't think there was any fence along the, the road, the back road that goes into the back of St. Williams there, like the back part of the lot. I don't believe there's any fence.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe the rear portion.
Right, so I mean, you know, if the purpose of fence is to keep people out, then, you know, so that the site isn't accessible, then you either have to fence the whole thing or, you know, the, or the site has to be completely, you know, brought back to its original, you know, with, with, with grass and so on and so forth, you know what I mean? So that it's safer for people to go into.
Uh huh.
But, you know, you just can't leave a dirt pile, you know, that's totally accessible to anybody that wants to go in there, and that's the way it is right now. And, and, you know, I know, I know you're talking about possibly coming back to the board in the future. You know, that could be a month from now, that could be five years from now, and that, you know, from our perspective. So I would, I don't have a problem with releasing the, the permit, but as far as the bond goes, I think you guys have a lot of work to do before I would be in support of that.
And can you be more specific there, Mr. Duffy?
As far as?
The work to be done before the release of the bond.
Sure. Well, fence the property, you know, keep, keep at least the Main Street side privacy on the fence in shape so that it's not, it's not in tatters. Keep it secured. You know, no peripheral-type businesses going on there, like, like a car sale, for example.
Certainly.
You know, and just have, and just have it be presentable.
So I guess, and again, perhaps this isn't the form. Perhaps this board can discuss this, you know, after the fact, with Ms. Louder, and get back to us. But what I heard were two somewhat different things there. One was the removal of the fencing, and another is now securing the site. And this is exactly why we're here. We just want to confirm with this board what the direction is. We're not saying yes or no to anything. We want a safe, secure site. We want a clean site, same as the board does. So whatever the board determines is most appropriate is where we'll go.
You also, Mr.?
I think I'm all set, yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, you've led us down a path that is a little confusing. You mentioned a few things, such as there are thoughts and plans of what you want to do with the property, and then you bring up town meeting, what that might...
No, sir, I don't believe I brought up town meeting.
Did you?
No.
Okay. I'll look it up.
Okay.
Do you have any ideas at all of what you're going to do with that property?
No, sir, not at this time.
Then, zero?
I, I would be completely speculating at this point if I gave the Planning Board any information. I don't want to give you incorrect information. We've had some very preliminary discussions, but it's frankly not in a position to present.
Well, if you have no reason to have equipment in there, then you have no need for a fence.
The, the...
If you have no need for a fence, then you have, you'd better make it look like a field. Get some lumen there, seed it, get it growing, so when, a month from now, as you said, five years from now?
No.
You can do something with it, but in the meantime, it's not going to look like it has looked for the last three-plus years.
The equipment there now serves there for the removal of the stumps and the, and the stones.
Yeah, but that's something you could have been doing for the last three years.
Ideally, sir, we would have been building this project over the last three years. Unfortunately, that just did not happen, but I, I understand.
So I'll say it again, you have no idea, no thoughts, no plans for the site. And you don't, so that means you have no idea how long it'll be in the condition that it is now.
No, sir.
To be honest with you, unless you have a nice, pristine, and I'll use that word, fence, it looks like a junkyard. So I would suggest that if you have none of all of those things that I, the other members mentioned, I would get some lumen, spread it out, grow some fast brass, take the fence down, and get the equipment out of there until such a time as you can honestly come back with us with a plan. Because, to be honest with you, I thought you had a good plan before. So if you're going to throw that plan away that you worked hard to develop, then that's it.
Mr. Fowler, the Cerullos thought that they had a good plan before. Unfortunately, time has changed that.
Why?
Well, a lot has changed, sir, since then.
Tell me about it.
The project's simply not viable at the level of affordability, for one, but obviously, the increase in costs associated with supply chain issues and the pandemic-related shortages have drastically changed the client's pro forma.
Yeah, I understand all of that, but if you drive up and down Main Street in the meantime, there have been 20 other sites developed.
I understand, sir. And again, the Cerullos more than anyone want to see that site developed.
Well, that's my suggestion.
Hey, Mr. Fowler. All right, so let me see if I can kind of round these all in sort of together. In the state it's in right now, I wouldn't want to see the fence come down.
Okay.
Okay? But I also don't want to see a junk fence there. It needs to look good in, in terms of what people are driving by. It's literally the dead middle of Main Street. So, you know, you kind of need to have the, while the fence is up, it needs to look presentable.
Uh huh.
I agree with Mr. Fowler, though, that there would, and the others, that it'd be ideal to have the fence down. I mean, there's really no other sites that we've ever had stay fenced in, you know, when they're, you know, waiting to see what happens. So I'm not going to impose upon you that requirement, but at the same time, I don't want to see the fence come down and then have a dust bowl blowing out onto Main Street because you haven't done anything other than level the property, you know, and deal with stumps and boulders or whatever. Actually, I don't even care if the boulders are there, as long as there's grass everywhere else. It's just, you can't, it's got to be one or the other kind of thing, you know what I mean? If you guys want to keep a fence up and keep the fence in, you know, pristine and presentable order, you know, fine, I guess that's fine, but it wouldn't be ideal, but you can't just take the fence down and have, you know, it, the way it is right now, just have it just blowing out onto Main Street and looking like that. It, it needs to be at least looking like an open lot, you know, because you've taken other pieces of it away in the meantime when you thought you were building it. You know, you've lost the, the asphalt-paved area. Well, I mean, that's unfortunate. If it was still there, then obviously that would alleviate some of that problem. You don't have it anymore. It came out. Nothing you can do about that now, but you're going to have to do something in the meantime because, you know, which, you know, you just can't have it like that. So I don't know how specific you need it, but I think that Mr. Fowler's suggestion of, you know, lumen it and throwing some grass in there, making sure that it's cleaned up, and then take your fence down, and then we'll wait and see what you got, you know, to come in to see us with whenever it is you come back to see us.
Okay.
But you don't do that, and you take the fence down, and then you come back in to see us, you know, it's, it's not going to, not going to be a happy board looking at you who just ignored everything we asked you once. You know, are we going to believe you when you tell us what you're going to do again?
Well, precisely, Mr. Chair. And that, and again, that's why I think some clear direction would be most helpful for us, for you, for the town.
So would the four members agree that leveling the site?
If you agree.
Look, what's me?
If you agree.
Me? Why, there's only three of us here. Oh, I mean, if all four of us agree that it be leveled out, loomed, throw some grass in there, take your fence up.
Right.
Is that agreeable to everybody? Is that direction?
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I give a little feedback? I was on-site today. I walked the entire site. So as you go down there to the site, you did fill in the holes where you were digging out the foundation for the footings and so forth. As you go past that, about 10, 15 feet past that, you start going down about 10, 10 feet to the silt fence in the rear.
Uh huh.
Mr. Fowler, have you been on the site?
Not within the past few weeks, no.
Okay, so it hasn't changed much. So, I mean, just to think that you're going to go in there and throw some grassy down there isn't going to happen, because as you get to a certain point, you're going down. It's not level. For you to level that site and put some grassy in there, there's going to be major truckloads of lumen and fill coming in to level that thing completely, so it's not a safety hazard for residents that happen to walk back there and all of a sudden fall down 10 feet or whatever.
The only thing I'd say is, one, the residents shouldn't be walking on a private piece of property.
Well, if the fence is down.
No, but you shouldn't go onto my property if I have anything, like whatever's built there. So I would be uncomfortable in imposing upon you, making sure that people can walk on your private property, because I don't want to encourage anyone to walk on your private property.
Right.
So, I mean, to me, again, this is just me, then, you know, a reasonable amount of leveling, you know, I mean, I don't need, you know, I don't need to run a level around the whole place and make sure the bubble doesn't move. You know, I'm just saying, clean, nice-looking, and honestly, if people are walking onto your property and walking to the back of your property, they'd get a whole different issue here. You know what I mean? It's, it's not a walking path. It's not a cut-through and shouldn't be used that way, any more than you want the liability or anybody, you know, should want to be doing that.
I agree.
So for that reason, but Mr. Fattaya's right, if there's holes on there and they're literally a danger for someone who may stumble across your, your lot for some reason, I just do not see them fall into a, you know, a void.
Certainly.
So, you know, when he's talking about that kind of thing, that is not acceptable.
Understood. I guess what, what we wouldn't want to do is grade the lot to, say, level at street level just for the sake of doing that when we don't know what the future site conditions are.
I know, that isn't what I'm asking. I don't think it was Mr. Fowler was asking. I, I don't know. Like, I mean, I just want it looking good.
Sure.
That's the idea.
And obviously, no obvious hazards. The foundation holes, my understanding is they were filled, from what I could see from the road today, they appear to be filled. So, you know, and again, it is absolutely a private site. There is, there should be no trespassing on that site. So, you know, we'll fill any obvious dangers. Lumen the site, and then, once it's loomed and, and seeded, the fence would be removed? Is that the consensus of the...
Yes, absolutely.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add one thing, though, or a couple of things, actually. Mr. Fattaya's point about, about it dropping off towards the roadway, the back roadway that goes to St. Williams is going to be a constant source of erosion there over time. The longer that it's, that it's there, the longer, the more material is going to start, is going to continue to wash down that hill, no matter what.
I mean, I don't, I don't know what, for Mr. Fowler, but the idea is that you keep it up. It's not a one-time, you know, and let it wash away.
That was going to be my next question.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I expect that these gentlemen, this gentleman here knows what he's supposed to do, and he's spreading lumen to hill, and they get, you do put, you put erosion control devices down, correct?
We have erosion control devices down.
That's right. So that's not going to happen if they do the right work.
Okay, I just wanted to mention that. And then also, you know, when the grass starts to grow, should it be in an extended period of time, you know, before you're back here and, you know, with another development or whatever? You know, that, that would, should be, there should be a certain amount of maintenance there as well.
We don't want to see four-foot-high grass.
Understood.
With leopards and things hiding there.
Right.
Right. All right. We good? That's about right?
Yep.
All right.
So the board might if I just recap?
Yep.
So we are going to fill any obvious depressions. We are going to remove, finish removing all the stumps. Stones, I heard, sort of makes...
I mean, I don't care.
If you can bring the stone pile down so it's just stones on the ground rather than somebody climbing up on the stones and taking a header down, whatever, so.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I actually was going to suggest something similar, so it's not just a pile of boulders, but perhaps put those across the boundary to discourage any, or stop any vehicles from coming off of Main Street, and that way it's not a pile, they're actually serving a a main street, and that way, it's not a pile, they're actually serving a purpose for the time being.
It's semi-decorative.
Yeah.
We could do that. We could move the stones along the line of the roadway.
Looks a little more purposeful.
And then, once we've got the level, we'll lumen seed the, the sort of top-grade area.
And then, remove the stumps that are there, you know, stumps are nice.
And it be maintained, no vehicles, you don't wanna see vehicles still hanging around there, or, you know, being stored there, or anything like that.
One other item, for the looming and seeding, just making sure that you coordinate with the conservation agent, since that is, the rear of the property is a jurisdictional area. The erosion controls are set up, but just make sure you give Joe a call before you do anything.
Okay.
Thank you.
The silt fence are still there?
Yes. Yep, just making sure that he's still cooled down.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Excellent.
That's clear. Thank you very much.
We'll be happy to see you once you're all set, and go from there. Is that all right?
Yes.
All right, excellent.
Take care.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Oh, releasing the permit, then, right. Sir, sir, just one second, because you actually did ask us to release your permit, so, that was, since even though it's in the administrative, we have to vote on it, so. So, we have a motion on the abandonment of the permit as requested by the applicant. All right, we have a motion made, and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, housekeeping, taken care of. All right, so, it moves us to, so, I'm gonna ask that the board indulge a request to take Agenda Item E out of order, for like, two seconds, and that's all it'll take, just as a courtesy, if we could. The board amenable to that?
Sure.
All right, so we'd like to move, or make a motion to move Agenda Item E up, and take it now, we have a motion.
So moved.
A second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, so we're gonna do Agenda Item E, which is 60 Highland View Road.
I appreciate that, Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Matt Hammer with Lamplex Engineering. I'm here before you to withdraw the application for 60 Highland View Road. The applicants have, I don't know the exact reason, but I presume it's economics, they had a few different properties that they were working with, and decided to withdraw this application, where the building would be different. When we come back again, it didn't seem to make sense to modify the plans and wait for a different use of the building, so at this time, we'd like to withdraw.
All right, so, unless any of the board members have any questions.
Mr. Fowler? I'm a little disappointed, but I hope, I can't help but think that somehow this is gonna come back to bite us, because when we found out about the drainage, it created a problem for you.
It didn't really, Mr. Fowler. It had nothing to do with the drainage.
It didn't?
No, it did not.
So, why the, why the delays all these weeks?
Just back and forth with the engineering department related.
On the drainage?
Well, drainage and site design, it wasn't specifically that, so it has nothing to do with the withdrawal by the applicant, so.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Johnson, if I could, you know, very disheartening to hear that, because I was very, very upbeat on the project, having that type of business coming into town, and that's unfortunate that you withdrew, but on the drainage issue, I did review a lot of the planning board meetings that we've had, and there was nothing mentioned by you, Mr. Hammer, about the drainage being there, prior to when you told us at one of the last meetings we had, but, water under the bridge, but, just for the record, I did review all the previous minutes, and reviewed the camera videos and so forth, and, because I would've remembered that, but, you know, but that's very unfortunate, because I was looking forward to the strawberries, and blueberries, and raspberries that were gonna come out of there, so, but, so, but, thank you very much.
All right, so, do we have a motion to?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, sorry, to interrupt, recommend withdrawal without prejudice, just in case this project comes back to fruition, we don't wanna reinvent the wheel. Yep.
All right, so, do we have a motion to allow, to grant withdrawal without prejudice?
So moved.
Seconded. We have a motion made, and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that'll bring us to Agenda Item C, which is 160 and 170 River Road. The applicant has requested to continue to our 6:27 meeting. We have that on for, we don't have it on yet, so, we have a motion to continue that hearing to 7:05 on the 27th.
So moved.
A motion made, and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. That brings us to Agenda Item D, 85 Livingston Street, Treehouse Brewing Company, on behalf of Tuxbury Country Club LLC, site plan review. All right, just while the, while the applicants get settled, I'll just remind those at home, anyone else paying attention to this, who may or may not be unclear of what's coming in tonight, this is part of the project, but this is not the part that's where the main building of the country club is. The applicants may discuss that, but that's not the purpose of this hearing. This is that other building that's on the site, the one closest to Livingston Street, so it's part of the whole site, but not the big building, and some of what people might have seen in the newspaper, and seen pictures of, you know, and discussions of, just so they understand what we're focusing on here, and then we'll go from there, all right? If you just state your names for the record, the floor is yours.
Hi, thank you for seeing us tonight. My name is Sarah Maggi-Moran, I'm the Chief of Staff for Treehouse Brewing Company. I'm joined with Jim Hanley, he's an engineer from Civil Design Consultants, and Joe Vecchione from Bergmeier, he's an architect, and Treehouse Brewing Company, if you are not familiar with us, is a producer of fine craft beverages, and we serve...
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt.
Pull that closer.
And just pull it closer to you, that way the people at home will pick it up, too.
Yes.
Good? Okay. Oh, wow. All right, I'll start over. So, Treehouse Brewing Company is a producer of the finest craft beverages, we serve them in the most beautiful and comfortable environments, and Alex was kind enough to put some images up of some of our locations, so we could give you guys an idea of the thought that we put into our facilities. I think if you could screen that, just walk you through, through this, I, you know, we don't need to go into too much detail, but I just wanted to give you a little idea of kind of the thoughtfulness that we put into our location. So, our roots are really deep, run through Massachusetts and run through New England, so the locations you're looking at, this is our flagship brewery, and it's in, it's okay, in Charlton, Massachusetts. We also have, next slide, a taproom and outpost in Sandwich, Massachusetts, that's right at the mouth of the Cape Cod Canal, if you're familiar with Sandwich at all. So we have a full-service taproom and a beer garden, right, sitting on the sand. We also have locations in South Deerfield, which in Massachusetts, and this is our beer garden there, and there's a kind of vast park-like setting that runs far deep into the grass over there. And next, we have, this is our farm in Woodstock, Connecticut. I know we were just, you were disappointed about the berries that would not be coming out in front of the previous applicant, but this is something that is near and dear to our hearts, is part of our New England roots, and we use a lot of the ingredients that we grow on the farm in our beverages. And then, this is back to our Charleston facility, which is our production facility, but also, it's our full-service taproom. We make not only beers, but seltzers and ready-to-drink cocktails, we have our own distillery, and a pretty exciting coffee roasting program, we do cold brew as well, so that's kind of runs the gamut of the different locations that we have. So as I said, you know, our roots are, are deep in Massachusetts and New England as a whole, but we've made it a mission to find a home to serve greater Boston, and we are filled with such pride and purpose to be calling Tuxbury our home. We're just absolutely thrilled to be here. First time we saw Tuxbury Country Club, and then getting to know Mark Ginsberg, we knew that we found someone that shares this same passion for creating lasting and special experiences, but also somebody that has acute attention to detail in Mr. Ginsberg, and we very much share that, that we have that in common, so we're really excited to carry on the legacy of this, you know, beloved community fixture that we've discovered in Tuxbury, and then put behind it all the vigor and enthusiasm that is Treehouse, it is core to our brand, our brand promise, and the commitments that we make to the municipalities that we reside in. So, our plan, I know you mentioned that we're not talking about the main space, but...
You're free to bring it up, if you like.
Sure. I mean, I, just to give you a little background, but our plan is to evolve the main event space into an inviting beer hall with a retail store. We're going to operate a golf course, and, you know, the various amenities that feed that golf course. But today, we, as you mentioned, are here to talk about 85 Livingston Site Plan Review, in addition to put on that building, which will house our storage for our beverage-to-go operations. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Jim, and you can talk a little bit about the site.
Great. Thanks, Sarah. Jim Hanley, Civil Design Consultants, so I'll just kind of walk you through the site plan, then hand it over to Joe, and you can kind of talk a little bit about the building, and how the building and the site kind of work hand-in-hand together. So, again, we're at 85 Livingston Street, under the new zoning, we're in the MUB slash commercial zone. We're here in front of you tonight for a site plan review, so. I know all of you are familiar with the site, so this is an existing salon on the first floor, with professional office on the top, it's somewhere about 2,900 square feet, plus or minus, of that existing building. What we are proposing to do is a 51 and a half by 56 and a half foot building addition, so that's just over 2,900 square feet, and the proposed use will change from salon and professional office to resale sales, retail sales of alcoholic beverages, which is a byright use in the zone. So, a few things about the location there. That 50, that building addition is located completely within the existing parking lot. To the, to the top of the page, or the north of the building, we're proposing to remove about 10 to 15 feet deep by about 56 feet wide of additional parking area, and that basically just kind of rounds out the, the existing parking that's out there, and convert that over to lawn. And then we have minor adjustments to the sidewalks and the ramps, leading to and from the existing portion of the building. So, to the very top, you can see that we're tying it into the existing sidewalk that comes in off of Livingston Street, onto Ironwood Lane, and then tying that into the existing walkway that goes around the perimeter of the building, and then kind of following along on the, on the left-hand side, on the west side, we're proposing a handicap slope or ramp from the front doors down to the handicap parking spot, which is the closest to the, to the existing building. So what we wanted to do is basically maintain traffic past the building, so that we didn't impact the rest of the site, so we maintain that 24-foot-wide lane, go past the proposed addition. To the, to the right, or the east of the building, that's our loading area, which will generally be something the size of a box truck, give or take, that would be coming into that cooler. And we wanted to maintain vehicular access to the existing spring water well retail facility, I guess? Yeah, right there. So we wanted to make sure that we maintain the traffic flow along that, to keep that operational. Along the left-hand side, or the west side of the site, we've designated 15 parking spaces for, for what they do is they do a to-go order kind of system, and I think Joe or Sarah will get involved in that a little bit, give you a little bit of background on that. All in all, we have a slight reduction in impervious surface, and with that, I think it's about 300 square feet, give or take, so therefore, we don't, we are required to make drainage improvements, we're not increasing impervious surface, we won't have any increases in off-site peaks, and received an email forwarded from DPW stating such that there was no stormwater concerns. Very limited adjustments to the grades around the building, specifically at the location of the handicap ramps, and then around the remainder of that perimeter, it's really kind of a saw cut for the, for the actual construction of the building, so, basically the surface, at least the parking surface is, is remaining essentially the same. And then, limited adjustments to the existing utility services, we'll adjust those as need be, as we move forward, but for the most part, they'll be serviced through the existing building that's out there. With that said, I'll kick this over to Joe from Bergmeier, and he can kind of walk you through the building, and what we're proposing to do.
Yeah, and just for orientation purposes, Joe Vecchione, Bergmeier Associates, out of Boston, and just for orientation purposes, this is actually flipped, so, from, from the civil plan, so you can see the loading, loading dock over here. So I just, you know, want to run you through the operations of this space, and how that informs the building form. So, as Jim stated, there's a box truck that would come in, and then the operations team would load that through the sliding door, Plan West here, into the cooler, and then, from there, the customer would make their order online through the Treehouse app, and then, from there, that would be, it would be assembled in the existing structure, Plan East, by the retail team, put into those coolers, until they, the customer arrives at their designated pickup time, and from there, when the customer arrives, they would, the retail team would bust the orders, and I'll just get the hand over here, out this main entry, down the ramp, and into the parking lot. This is not in a publicly accessible building, the customer stays in the car, so they would run the order out, load the vehicle, and come back in. So that's just the extent of the operation, that new addition would be simply a cooler, and then the existing building would be modified for their assembly of sales. I'm not sure I have anything further on that, but we're happy to hear any of your questions, Sarah. Did you have anything further?
All right, thank you. We'll start with Mr. Fowler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. How, let me ask you this, from a business viewpoint, how would someone driving down the street, seeing this, know what kind of beer is in there?
So, we depend on our app-based or online store, so you go on treehousebrew.com, and you select your location, because we have several locations, and once you select that, and you can scroll through your different options, because we sell more than beer, and then that will be loaded in the store online, and you can see all of our menus offered. You make your purchase in advance, this is not a retail situation where you pull in, and then you get out of your car, and you look through shelves, it is all happening online. And, you know, we come before you today, having established this template and this operation successfully, both in South Deerfield and in Sandwich, I know you received some communication from those municipalities, but we've made great efforts to make it as frictionless as possible.
Okay. Thank you for the education. It's, so if someone was online, and I know a lot of people do a lot of online searches for breweries, I'm trying to think of the right word, for, I don't drink beer, but anyways, not often, anyways, craft, I guess it's called. Unless, if they were doing that, then they would find you online, and they would know what address, you can go drive in and do whatever. Sounds kind of like the South, they have drive-through windows down.
Oh, no, we're, we're not a drive-thru, no. I know they have, they have those down there, no. No, that's not us. We just try to make it convenient and seamless for folks, but definitely not a drive-thru.
No, absolutely. Now that we got to the point of drive-thrus, it's obvious that you're, you're working out of, you're going to be working out of one of the most attractive sites in Tuxbury, and I think all of us in town, and with this board included, because we approved it years ago, and we were happy then, and we've been happy forever, ever since, for the stay. It's been successful, it's been a, a go-to venue, and it's gonna change, but I'd like to know that, and I don't want you to have to tell us what you're gonna do in the, the main hall, in the sequoia room, and all the others, but I guess my point is, I'll say with the same thing I said, it's one of the most attract, if not the most attractive sites in Tuxbury, and looking at the architectural renderings for the addition on the back of the, that building, I'm a little disenchanted. Did you, in the main, in the building itself, the, the existing building, did you have to take some of the windows out to do the interior stuff?
So, for the, for that backside of the building that faces the parking lot, just where the roofline falls, for the operation, I quote, we did have to infill one window on the back.
Okay.
The three facades remain unchanged.
Okay.
You know, the, the cooler itself, and the architecture that informs it, it's just a product of its function.
Yep.
You know, to maintain, you know, the temperature required to...
Sure.
Maintain the quality of the beer over time. So that's really what informed the architecture here, it's, you know, and the building itself, the cladding, as well as the color, will, will match the existing architecture around it, to, you know, try to integrate it within the quality of, of what's on-site already.
Well, that leads me to my question. On the rendering, what we have so far, is just a blank wall, three blank walls with the doors at one end, is there any manner in which you could add a number of windows that don't, you don't have to have full, you know, inside-outside, just from the outside, it looks like a window, and it matches the contours, and matches the color and style of the windows that are there, so when you're driving down the street, it doesn't look like a warehouse.
Yeah.
But it looks like, in addition to an attractive building that's part of the main So that's question number one, is that possible?
We're certainly amenable to doing that, to, you know, what we do, and I think it's evident by the, the images that we showed, we're really committed to quality, and making sure that the existing architecture, what's there, we meet or exceed it in terms of form, so in terms of the trim, adding faux windows, you know, we'll be happily, happy to work with the planning board, and the, the planning director, and the community director, to make sure that it meets the standards, you know, that you want it to be, and we want it to be.
Good.
So, yeah, faux windows, we'd be happy to, you know, if that's included as a condition to the approval, we'll be happy to work with you guys to make sure that all those, all those are met, to the quality of the planning board.
We're in agreement.
Yes.
That's a great start, thank you. Thank you very much. The only other question I have is, on the roof, obviously it's a cooler, you're gonna have to have mechanics. to have to have mechanics up there. Mechanicals, is there a manner in which you could shield them? So someone, you've got the country club, main hall, there's a wedding going on, or whatever, and you're looking out at a roof filled with mechanics, mechanicals. Is there, I don't know if you want to put a man-side roof on it, you know, to pitch it up, to hide it, or something. You tell me, you're the architect.
Yeah, I mean, we're trying to preserve the exist, so if you look at the existing building, that rear facade, there's a gable, and we're trying not to go so high as to affect that gable, because it does overhang the primary roof form. As far as the mechanical units required, there'd be about four pretty small condensers. They don't require much of a curb, it's just more of a, just more of a dunage for that, you know, so it's really low above the roof. And we tried to set those back towards the center of the roof in order, from the perspective of a human walking body, you're not going to be able to see that from the, from the grade of the site. If you're at a bird's eye, it might be a different story, but we don't really see from that perspective. In elevation, you know, you're looking at two dimensions, but from the human scale, you're not going to see, see much of that. So that's why we try to set them away from the edge of the roofline, but still on the roof, as to not create any sort of a fence on the ground. So that was kind of the method behind that. But it's just, it's four small condensers.
And this is nothing new to little old Tuxbury, but we had them do it to Burger King when they put a, at the intersection of Route 38 and 495, they had a whole wall of stone, I mean, brick. So we had them put faux windows in, not four, faux. And it, you know, it was fine. And I know Mr. Ginsburg put some in.
Yeah, I noticed that on the site.
Most people don't know that, but there's some in there because of what was behind it. So it's nothing new to the site. And I'd like to say this, welcome to Tuxbury.
Thank you.
Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't want to beat a dead horse, but Bobby took the words right out of my mouth there. You know, the drawing that I'm looking at, I mean, that, to me, looks like a pretty, well, let me preface it by saying, I've talked to a lot of Tuxbury residents who are very happy to have you guys come on board. So don't take this as too much of a criticism, but that's, that's a pretty substantial architectural downgrade from, from the rest of the complex there, from, from my point of view, you know, to have, you know, three walls, you know, with clapboards. And so hopefully, hopefully, we could do something a little better on that. There's a lot of excitement, I think, from people that I've talked to around town. I know you mentioned that you will be operating the golf course. Believe it or not, one of the, a little bit unrelated to this, but one of the most common questions that I'm getting is, who's going to run the golf course? So that's, that's kind of an important, important question. Now we know the answer to that, it's going to be you guys. So any, any changes planned, or?
We have not gotten to, we haven't gotten to operation yet, except to say that...
Okay, okay. I know, we're talking about coolers today.
Well, but we're very intent on golf, which is why we're coming about this project, and we're really excited for it.
And, you know, and to Bobby's comment about possibly, you know, installing a parapet wall or something along those lines on the roof, you know, I envision the day possibly you guys are back yesterday, and hey, you know, we may want to put a nice roof deck up there or something, so you might need something along those lines. And it looks like a very shallow-pitched roof to me.
We have no intent on putting a roof deck on this.
Okay, I was just curious.
And just to reiterate what Joe said, is the condensing units are four small ones, and they'll be set back, so you won't be able to...
It just looks like a pretty big span for a very shallow, is it almost like a flat roof, or?
Yeah, it's pitched a quarter inch per foot, just to have a gentle, gentle slope to a gutter, to just, you know, ease the, you know, ease any drainage off of the building. Again, it's a net decrease of impervious coverage, but, yeah, we just wanted to not, again, we didn't want to affect any more of the architecture than we needed to of the building, and interfere with that gable above.
Okay. All right, well, listen, Mr. Chairman, is, that is my only comment, is the, is the character of the, of the exterior walls that you're designing there. I think that I would like to see a little bit more thought being put into that, and as far as the cooler goes, I'd be, I'd be, I'd be fine with that.
All right, Mr. Fattaya.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm reading Mr. Hoddeman's comments here about a, a traffic study. Are you opposed to doing something like that to?
No, not opposed, no, no.
So I'm reading his comment, and he says that the applicant was to have some, some type of device that, that only picks up traffic that goes left towards Main Street. So I don't know if that's accurate, because when you go right off of Livingston Street, if you're going that way, I mean, I'd be concerned as a planning board member and a resident of the town, of the traffic that goes that way as well. I don't see everybody going left onto Main Street, but maybe going right more than left, because right takes you right directly towards the road to get to 93 and 495. So if he wants to do, and I would suggest that if we do a traffic study, we do it both ways. Because as you go right, if you've been down there, we have, you know, ballparks, playgrounds, splash pads, football, football facilities down there, regular picnic areas down there. So I'd be interested in seeing that traffic study going that way as well. So if that's to be done, I'd like to have them do it going both ways. So that was my only, one of my only comments, but I love you guys coming to Tuxbury. I think it's going to be phenomenal. I've had more phone calls to people saying, wow, guess I'll see you more now, because I'm becoming a Tuxburer by my Treehouse Brewery stuff rather than having to go out there. But like both colleagues mentioned, is the aesthetic look, if you could work on that, that was my first, when I seen the plans, I'm like, we have to do something aesthetic-wise on that, just to break up the walls. I think you would benefit from that, and it would just blend so much better. Nobody would know it would be a cooler for the most part, if you think it would be more middle-office space or whatever. But with that, you know, like Mr. Fowler said, welcome to Tuxbury, and we'll look forward to seeing more of you guys. So, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so the only one left. So the only thing that I don't think anybody's asked that is pertinent, and Mr. Fattaya brought up the traffic study, how much control do you have over staggering the deliveries, or pickups, I guess would be more accurate, not deliveries, the pickups, to try to alleviate some of the traffic? Have you already done that in your other sites? Can you do that? Please discuss. Excellent.
Yeah, yes, we have. I could sit in front of you today and say we have a proven template for this. We've worked to eliminate as much friction as possible. It is very much in our best interest to be able to give the best experience for our guests, and that includes when they make the purchase and they come pick up their beer. No one wants to sit in the line or have backed-up traffic, and that is something that we have eliminated through our reservation system. So you go on to treehousebrew.com, select a location, go through, it's a really user-friendly, intuitive interface, that you select what you like, and then you select a pickup time. I'm very impressed with our customers. They abide by the pickup time. They show up, press a "I'm here" on your phone, and then your order is walked out to your car, and we thank you, and you are on your way.
So, but from what I'm looking at, what I mean is more along the lines of your ability to prevent 10 people from picking 5 o'clock on Friday as their pickup time is really what I mean. You have that built in?
Oh, yes. No, we load the site, think of the pickup times as an inventory, and there's a certain number of, that you can select online, and then when they are not available, then you'd have to pick a different pickup time. And as demonstrated by the Sandwich Town Manager sent you guys a note, that it's going rather seamlessly in Sandwich. We're really proud of our crew, they've worked really, really hard on this, and they're doing a great job, and we have that commitment to Tuxbury as well, and most of all, to our customers, that they want to have an enjoyable experience.
So the only thing I would say, and I know the other members are, whether they care or not, but, is that, you know, perhaps just reserving for us the ability to be able to talk to you again, if it turns out that, you know, there's some disconnect of what's being allowed in terms of that, that pickup times with what's really going on traffic-wise, and it's not really being taken into account. You know, I don't envision having much of a problem, but it's the only way we can be sure that we have a chance to talk about it again if we have to. So if there's no issue with that.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in the proposed conditions that I included in your packets, the, the last bit in that paragraph there gives you guys that ability.
Okay, so then you have to do it separate?
Right, no, it'll be all set, so, yep. For all, sure, all uses of the site are captured and mitigated if deemed necessary by the town. The town encompassing, the board, staff, making recommendations, whomever, so, that's built into the ability to revisit it.
And Mr. Chairman, on that note as well, if we do have a chance to talk again, would you guys be open to submitting a couple of, maybe some sketches of some, some type of upgrade on the construction, on the, on the design?
When you say "talk again," we welcome an ongoing dialogue. If I may, thank you. So under the site plan review process, the, excuse me, this is under the new zoning bylaw, so this is kind of our first time really doing an application soup to nuts with the site plan review. What we could ask the applicants to do is, when they have, excuse me, full color renderings, they can submit them to me, and I can bring them to you guys as an administrative item to look at, because something like that really isn't in the purview of site plan review, because we're not, site plan special permit anymore, it's far less discretionary. We're really looking to make sure with the site plan review that there is compliance with zoning bylaw, that there's no, the design and construction don't have major impacts on the surrounding areas, not necessarily, you know...
Aesthetic.
Exactly. There's certainly, there's certainly room for, in best practices in site planning, architectural integrity in urban design, but through this site plan review process, we wouldn't necessarily be able to, like, you better use, like, brown number two on the, you know what I'm, do what I'm saying? So like, we wouldn't be able to, under the findings of a site plan review, exercise that kind of discretion, because this is meant to be more high-level. But what we can certainly do is ask, ask the applicants to submit to us renderings for, for further consideration. And it doesn't mean there can't be a dialogue back and forth, but it wouldn't be a condition per se.
And if I may jump in here, we are incredibly committed to providing the most beautiful, memorable experiences, comfortable, welcoming environment for all of our customers, as demonstrated by the many locations that we've shown you tonight. I agree with you, Committee Member Fowler, Tuxbury Country Club is absolutely beautiful. I wouldn't say it is the finest building in Tuxbury, I would say it is one of the finest buildings I've found anywhere, and I spend a lot of time looking at where Treehouse is going, and we are absolutely thrilled. There is no scenario where we would do anything under the standard of what Mark Ginsburg and his family has built, and, you know, we're really excited to continue on the legacy of that, that attention to detail, and I'm fully confident that you will be pleased with what we do with this site.
Good. Very glad to hear that.
I guess I'll agree with the idea that, you know, it's, I don't think there's any question, judging by the other projects you've done, that we have that much concern from you guys, that you aren't going to do, you know, do, it's more along the lines of, this is the first time we're doing this. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't discount my ability to stretch that clause into getting exactly this going forward. So I wouldn't advise those who come in after you to figure they're just going to get, you know, run us over up here. So, but, you know, I think, to Mr. Fowler's point, I think, or actually, all the members' point, those, those four windows, I think, are going to make a big difference. I know they probably didn't, and we didn't get renderings this time, like we get with a lot of our, which sort of solves those problems sometimes up front, because when we see it, you may have already really kind of made it look good in your own heads, and you know what it's going to look like. But without the rendering, we lose it sometimes in the 2D, you know, kind of without, you know, without the picture. And that's where you'll get, like, sort of like, I think, we'll start to have when we don't have those, that we're going to have this kind of conversation, where we're saying, well, what it looks like on paper in black and white, we're not sure. And then we, you know, then we get to figure this out like this. So I think that, you know, if you can send the renderings in with the, you know, the comments that we've made, hopefully incorporate into them. Obviously, it's as much in your interest as it is ours, you know, to stick with your, you know, your standing efforts to make everything look good and match up, and, you know, and all that. So not overly worried in this case, but I think it's good to kind of set this precedent right up, right up front.
So we'll get renderings to you?
Absolutely. Yep, unintended consequence of the new zoning bylaws, we don't require renderings now, so...
Right, which is, we were going to...
We're happy to share.
Offering to bring them.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's going to be one of those things, again, as we go forward, and it probably won't be your problem with, you know, we won't require them, but it wouldn't be discouraged to do so, because it's only going to make things simpler for those who bring their things in, you know, maybe following you to know that, that, you know, might make the process a little quicker and smoother. So, all right, so with that...
One more question, Mr. Chairman, if I could. Is there a timetable as far as when you guys are going to start selling beer?
Oh...
People are asking.
Mr. Fattaya seems to say... I gotta be honest with you, I'm going to check your order pickup to see if Mr. Fattaya's on there already.
I think that's fantastic.
I gotta be honest with you, I'm not, I'm not a Treehouse Brewery drinker at this part-time, but hopefully I will be, but we'll see what happens. But people are, I gotta tell you, people are, the buzz around town is crazy. People are asking me, because I'm on the planning board, you should know, Vinny, what's going on down there? I'm like, listen, I'm as blind as you as far as this goes until you guys come in. So hence the question as to when, when you're going to be open for sales and so, if you don't have an answer, that's fine.
I don't have a hard answer, and I wouldn't want to mislead anyone, but I can tell you that we are beyond thrilled to be in Tuxbury, and would like to be underway as soon as possible.
When you have the grand opening, we'll be there.
I think it's important to note, though, and we'll reiterate, is that all of the events at Tuxbury Country Club, in terms of like weddings and other events, are being held through the end of the year, so no one needs to worry about that. That has very much been established.
Excellent. All right, so with that, I will open you up to the audience. Anyone in the audience, any questions, comments, or concerns?
I have a question.
If you come up to the podium.
So I guess my...
You just got to state your name and your address for the record, please.
Sorry, my name is Brennan Bennett, I live in town, in Tuxbury.
Nope, your address.
Sorry, 20 East Street, Tuxbury, Mass. So my question and concern right now is the overall aspect of the driving, like, how much more is going to happen in the town of Tuxbury? Trucks, cars, things like that. You know, what kind of events are you going to have? How, how is that going to impact this town?
Well, the only thing is, and you guys are free to answer the question if you choose, but this is, again, this is where we get that thing, where we're crisscrossing between what's in front of us, which is the 85 Livingston, which is that building on the side, and the main building, and what they may or may not be doing there. So there's a disconnect there in terms of what this actual public hearing is about. So they've told us what they're going to do with the building that's before us tonight. You guys are free to answer the question if you like, but it's a question that's sort of not connected to what's here, other than, unless it relates to this building.
Right, and out of respect for the, the board and your time, we would like to just speak to the 85 Livingston Street. Except I did say, if you were here at the, the opening, that we are contemplating for a inviting beer hole in, in the main event center, and maintaining operations in the golf course, and that is the future of this, this facility for us. But as for tonight, I would like to talk to what's to remain to 85 Livingston Street.
And I'm not sure if, whether you caught it, I don't know when you came in, because I wasn't paying that much attention to that, but there's also, we're having a traffic study done as one of the conditions of the permit for this, what's in front of us, so that will get done. So we'll have the results of that, and any mitigation that may be appropriate and attachment to that will get done. But we do have to stick to what's in front of us.
Mr. Chairman, for the benefit of the residents, do we have a timeline on typically on a, on a traffic analysis?
Mr. Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So detailed in the condition, there will be, excuse me, a baseline traffic study performed, and then there will be a follow-up after six months of full business operations, meaning that the retail and the main facility are under operation, and then again at 12 months to capture golf, the main hall, and the retail operation, to ensure that, you know, nothing's getting left behind. But we're going to go for baseline, follow-up number one, and follow-up number two, and at any time, like we had discussed before, the applicant would be responsible for certain mitigation factors if necessary. It could be adjustment in how many people are allowed to pick up beer at one time, it could be possibly adjusting... could be possibly adjusting occupancy, and this is, you know, I'm not putting words in anyone's mouth, those are just the types of things that we could implement if we find that the traffic is negatively impacted.
Okay. I mean, that's really my concern at this point, I mean, we have a lot going on in Tuxbury, and it's, it's exciting to see what you could possibly build, but my concern is the traffic, and how that's gonna impact us all as we live here in Tuxbury, so.
Ma'am, that's a genuine concern around the whole town, not just yourself, but people are worried about what's gonna happen and how is it gonna affect the town as on Livingston Street and Main Street and coming in and out, but, you know, I try to stay positive on those things, and we'll deal with it as we go, I think, and see what happens. I don't know what's gonna happen as far as, and I mean, right now, we're doing the cooler part of the project, so.
Okay.
But I think those questions will all be coming down the road for, for you guys as well, as far as the traffic and mitigating that and so forth and so on, so. But that's a genuine question, a good question.
No, it isn't, and again, I don't want to deter anybody, I just, I'm just concerned only because I live in the center of town, and it's like, it's like a, it's like a, it's like a train, it's all you see is cars stuck behind one another. So that's, my worry is like, what, what kind of impact is this gonna have, and how are we gonna help alleviate the problem? That's all.
So I think, I think, so in this case, the traffic study's gonna pick up things that involve the main building, even though it's not what we're discussing, but that sort of a benefit of doing the traffic study in those increments, that that will capture that anyways, so. And then obviously, you know, the more mitigation you're asked to do, it's because the most successful you seem to be, so it's not really a bad thing, if you're that busy that we have to care.
Well, we would consider it a success if we didn't have-
Well, that's good, I'm just saying, if it was that bad.
Yeah, but our team is really committed to a comfortable, relaxed environment, so that's, that's what we're doing at our other locations, and we intend to do so here.
Since you have a track record, you, you know, it's not like it's something new that you're just trying out, so that's good.
To you, Ms. Lauter, we had a hearing, not hearing, a discussion with the state about reconstruction of East North Street, I mean, that area, which would affect you in a good way.
Oh.
But do we have any timeline on that?
So we did receive some communication from the state regarding that project, that's actually more in the town engineer's purview, but when we got some communication in the mail the other day, Mr. Hardeman was very excited, so I have to, I have to think that that project is, is coming to fruition soon. It's a reorganization, forgive me for going off topic on the public hearing, a reorganization of the Pleasant, Main, and East like triangle thing that happens over, over by where you live. So they'll be doing some, some things that are reconfigured to alleviate traffic in that specific area, not related to the application, but as Mr. Fowler said-
Only in that it's a byproduct that potentially be beneficial also to-
Yeah.
The applicant, so we'll slide it in there.
Yeah, it's to alleviate bottlenecks at the other end of Route 38, there we go.
So there we go, all right, any other questions?
No, I'm also, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Seeing that there is no one else in the audience, in the public comment section, with that, I'll bring it back to the board, what is the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion to, to accept the application for the cooler.
Just, just first, we have to close the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
First, that's fine, you're in the, it's all right. All right, so a motion to close, we have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, now as to the site plan, site plan review permit, do you have a motion? Or not permit?
Well, I would.
No, I'm not, I couldn't, I can't see, I'm just a Fattaya student.
That's okay, no, motion to accept the, the site plan review application.
All right, and then we'll include in that the condition that Ms. Lauter pointed out, you want me to read this out, or?
Probably for the record, yeah.
I'm gonna bring my glasses in tonight, so.
I can read it.
All right, so, "The applicant shall provide a traffic study so the impacts of the change from a personal service establishment to retail on the local roadways can be completely understood. Follow-up, follow-up traffic impact assessment shall be submitted to the Community Development Office after six months of full business operations, and repeat after 12 months of full business operations to ensure all uses of the site are captured and mitigated if deemed necessary by the town." Everybody's good? All right, so we have that condition, and then not a condition, but a request regarding the, the aesthetics on the building, so that we have that motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously, good luck and welcome.
Thank you.
Not too bad, right?
Oh, no.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to agenda item, old business, do we have any old business anyone wishes to discuss? Seeing none, any new business anyone wishes to discuss? I won't call, I guess it's only a new business in this, is that, you know, just for our own edification, that this was something new for us tonight, the site plan review. Obviously, we had made it an effort over time to not approve hearings in one shot. However, this is meant to be done that way, if it can be, so that isn't really going against our self-imposed rule, so anyone at home was wondering why it went like this. The idea of streamlining these things is part of the new zoning bylaw, and to do these kind of things that are, you know, somewhat non-controversial, so that we can move them along and not have it sit on the agenda forever for no other reason than, you know, to just do so.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add some more context, this was also a unique situation where the stormwater and drainage were not going to be affected, it was a building going on top of already impervious surface, so already developed, already paved, and in fact, they're going to be adding some landscaping that's going to, as Mr. Hanley noted, decrease the impervious surface and increase the landscaped area. So, you know, like you said, most of the site plan reviews, the expediency is intended, however, this one went particularly quickly because we did not have a drainage component to deal with, the site's already developed, so there's, there's the context for why this was pretty painless.
So I think, you know, everybody just be aware that, you know, we've got the new zoning bylaw, so some things will seem a little different than usual, bear with us as we, we all get accustomed to it. We're all gonna be better off for it, I think, so. All right, moving on to correspondence, we didn't have any this, this week, or this meeting, and with that, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
A motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, good evening, we'll see you on the 27th.